Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the November 4th Board of Supervisors meeting. We're going to go ahead and start this meeting, call it to order here at 9:01. And we'll start out with the moment of silence. Does anybody have a moment of silence? No moment of silence? Well?
Well, no. Vice President Dick Cheney.
Oh, good one. Yeah, so we'll go ahead and conduct a moment of silence for Vice President Dick Cheney. Sir, did you?
Jed Steele.
Jed Steele, that's right. Thank you for that. That's another. We'll dedicate it to Jed Steele and Vice President Dick Cheney. Supervisor Sabatier, could you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Consideration of extra items not appearing on the posted agenda. It looks like we have one.
Yeah, we have one.
Yes, Mr. Chair, requesting an extra item for consideration, recommendation to approve administrative funding to provide hunger relief due to SNAP, CalFresh benefit delay in the amount of $40,000 per week for two weeks, $80,000 total, and see consideration of recommendation to establish an ad hoc working group for hunger relief due to SNAP, CalFresh benefit delay.
Any comments? Did you want to add something, CAO or Supervisor Sabatier?
So I understand the situation that we are in. And in thinking of what criteria needs to be met for an extra item, typically it's a deadline. Typically, it's we are not going to be able to talk about this at the next posting of the next agenda. This definitely came up after the posting of the agenda. And while on a personal level, it does feel very urgent, on a very regulatory level, I don't feel this meets it. If you look at Item 7.2, which was on the agenda, which was posted, it does allow for direction to staff. And I think both of those things could be directed to staff. We don't have a contract. We don't have anything specific here to this. I think the action could be taken on 7.2. Maybe County Council can let us know if that would be available to us. I think these are important things to discuss, but I'm not sure that it meets that we are not going to be able to have this conversation at our next meeting. It's just urgent in a very personal way, not based on a deadline.
Well, I disagree. We need to, we need to agree to supply funding to meet the need for the next two weeks. And we're not going to meet again. And your item that you submitted does not have those action items that we really need to move this forward. So we've spent a lot of time working on this. So much was in flex last week, and we didn't know what the deadlines were going to look like and the timelines, and things are still unclear. So that's why we've put this request forward with very specific direction and asks.
Vice Chair?
Yeah, appreciate the comments from Supervisor Sabatier. And I did think about that, but I didn't. Although the memo that was submitted was, was pretty broad and allowed for a lot of discussion, I didn't think it was specific on the action items to, to be able to potentially do that. But I'd be interested to hear from County Council, too.
Lloyd?
So in order to be taken up as an extra item, the board must find a need to take immediate action, which came to the attention of the county after the agenda was posted. So really, the heart of the issue here is the urgency or the immediate need for the requested actions that fall under the extra item request. And so there are these three items. The first one is just whether or not to take it as an extra item. But the last two, the latter two, sub-items B and C specifically refer to approving administrative funding in a specific amount. And the last one, sub-item C, would be to form the ad hoc work group, arguably. That there is some overlap there between those two sub-items and an item and the general direction of staff that's being requested, other item point two. But it goes to the heart of the urgency of whether or not those specific sub-items, B and C, will need to be taken up today and in light of your board's schedule, absent a special meeting being conducted between now and the next regular board meeting.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Sorry, that wasn't very clear to me. In Item 7.2, can B and C be taken up? The concept of and giving direction to staff to do those two things. Because the ad hoc committee, in my opinion, absolutely that can be done in 7.2. Can that be done on B as well?
It can, yes. And so as long as it's specified under B, under sub-items B and C, and then you realize there's an overlap there for the specified amounts, specifically in sub-item B, where the ask there would be to do administrative funding to provide hunger relief in the amount of $40,000 per week for two weeks, $80,000 total. There is overlap there between 7.2 and 4.1. So either way, your board will have, will have an opportunity to consider both of those actions, whether or not it's done as an extra item. It has to be established that there's an urgency there such that the action has to be effectuated today as opposed to under 7.2, where there's some leeway, there are flexibility to direct staff to come back to the board, for instance, or to do it at a future point in time, not necessarily today. That's the urgency factor between those two items.
Yep.
All right. So I'll open it up to the public, see if, right, that's what I do, right? So if there anyone from the public that would like to speak on adding an extra item or the opportunity to add this extra item?
Honorable Chair, esteemed supervisors, I'm Mark Lips, I'm with Ripe Choice Farm Stay and Catering. And first of all, I want to say, it feels almost like this is the rallying that our county does when there's an emergency, like with fires and all of that. I really want to applaud all the service clubs and all the civic groups that have gotten out just in this last weekend and are collecting food. We couldn't have picked a worse time. It's around Thanksgiving, weather's coming in, people don't have to eat. And so I think it is incumbent on our leaders to do something. You know, if this is what, what is being done, but it needs to be recognized, the issue, and that you should be doing something that can help out these, these citizens who are in need.
So Mark, you would say that this extra item needs to be added in your opinion?
I, I think-
That's what we're really focusing on?
Yeah, I think so. I think, you know, I mean, if it's a, if it's a financial issue, then maybe, because there's a lot of other people, the state's now jumping on board and all of that as well.
Mark, when we, when we bring this forward, when, and if this passes, then you'll have more time to elaborate on it.
Oh, gotcha. Right, right, right. Sorry, sorry, sorry. You're right. This isn't a, yeah, okay. So no, I think, I think something should be done, and maybe this is it.
Okay. Thank you so much. Any other public comment? All right, I'll bring it back to the board for potential action.
I just have one question. Lloyd, I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't quite understand which would be the best vehicle to bring this forward. Obviously, we need to do something. So basically, what I'm, I'm asking you is for your professional opinion on how, what is the best vehicle to bring this forward?
Short answer is either way. Now, the difference between an extra item and a regular item, the extra item being 4.1, the regular item being 7.2, in this particular situation, would be Item 7.2, the regular item, opens it up for your board to direct staff. That's the ask under 7.2. And directions to staff can come in many forms, right? And part of what's factored in there is when the action is effectuated pursuant to direction of staff. Item 4.1, the extra item, is, provides a little more specificity in which your board's action can be effectuated that same day. And that's where the urgency factor comes in, under sub-item B, sub-item C, which your board is being asked to approve $40,000 per week to take out by motion. And then sub-item C is to form an ad hoc working group, identifying presumably the, the specific members of that ad hoc working group. That's a little, that's a bit more specific than just direction of staff to, to look into an ad hoc working group, for instance, or to form an ad hoc working group, right? So that's the difference between the two. But again, the short answer is either way, your board will have an opportunity to consider those two sub-items.
Okay. And then it, will one work faster than the other? Because this is like time, time sensitive. So would either route work in the essence of getting the money to the, the needed food banks at this, you know, ASAP?
Hard to say at that point, but just based on the language of the ask of the action, because it is more specific, and it's not just a general direction to staff to possibly come back to the board, depending on what comes out of your board's discussion under regular item 7.2, arguably, 4.1, with the urgency factor factored in there, would be more specific and would have more potential immediate results.
Vice Chair, and then I think he put his up first.
Yeah, I just was going to comment, I think, well, yes, either way, we could make something happen. But this, because we have a clear motion that would potentially be in front of us to approve the funding today as opposed to having to figure it out during the item. That's the way I look at it.
Yeah, if we want to get the money out the door, we need to have the extra item. If we, if we don't do that, and we just go with the other item, then we're going to have to come back and make a final decision later. So this is the way that we can get help out the door as soon as possible.
All right. I'll take a motion.
If there's nothing further, I'll motion to approve taking up the item as an extra item as it came up after the posting of the agenda.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries 4, 1, 0. All right. We can take that up at a later time. And so then we have our consent agenda. It looks like we have one item that's already being pulled, 5.6. Consent agenda items are usually not controversial, so, but if there is discussion that needs to happen, like 5.6, at a later time, we'll go ahead and pull it and talk about it at a later venture in our juncture, in our agenda. So is there any items that the board wants to pull? And I'll open it up to the public for anyone that would like to pull anything from the consent agenda item. Any items? If not, all right, no hands in Zoom. I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, move to approve the consent agenda as proposed with the exception of 5.6.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries 5, 0. All right, timed items, 9:02, public input. Looks like we're a little behind on that, but we'll go ahead and open it up for the public. If there's anyone that would like to speak for three minutes about something that's not on the agenda, please come up and state your name for the record, and we'll give you three minutes.
My name's Michael Katos. I'm resident of Upper Lake. Good morning, Chair Crandall and Vice Chair Asmussen, and esteemed members of the board. My name is Michael Katos. I'm a resident of Upper Lake. And I'm here today as both the team leader for the Lake County Rotary Club's Sexual Exploitation of Children Project and president of the Kelseyville Rotary Club. I'd like to thank you for this opportunity. The simple hidden crisis we face is this. CSSEC, Commercial Sexual Exploitation of Children, is a local threat that preys on our children's isolation and digital habits. It's not an outside problem. It's a Lake County problem. A problem that exploits the vulnerability of our youth. Our current efforts focus on rescue, which is vital, but we are failing to adequately address prevention. We need to equip our most susceptible groups, our middle school students and their parents, with the tools to protect themselves before exploitation even begins. The Lake County Rotary Club CSSEC pilot project is focused local solution designed to create sustainable prevention literacy. We are building a system that relies on community ownership. To ensure the highest standard of training, we are contracting with the Polyclass Foundation. They are training Kelseyville High School students to craft and deliver critical, relatable presentations directly to their peers at the middle school. Simultaneously, the Polyclass Foundation will lead specialized sessions for parents, bringing them on the specific digital red flags, grooming techniques, behavioral indicators they need to recognize on today's platforms. This pilot program creates a highly credible dual safety shield. Professional training leads to authentic youth education and equipped parents. The Rotary Club of Lake County have secured the initial seed funding and volunteer commitment to launch the first phase. The project is moving forward, but the board's partnership will dramatically enhance its chance for success's sustainability. Specifically, your committed support will go a long way towards efforts to maximize parental participation in these specialized presentations, a critical metric for true community change. The successful performance of this pilot is crucial to maximizing the likelihood that this program can be expanded to the rest of the county. By partnering with us now, you are maximizing the pilot's impact, ensuring that the successful model created by the Rotary Club of Lake County and the Polyclass Foundation is fully ready to be implemented in every single middle school and high school across Lake County. This investment secures the safety and well-being of all our children. We have credible partners, the youth leadership, and the commitment. We simply ask the board, Supervisor Owen, Supervisor Sabatier, Chair Crandall, Vice Chair Asmussen, and Supervisor Piska to partner with us to enhance the success of this critical prevention work and to help us make this a countywide safety standard. Thank you.
Thank you.
Honorable Chair, esteemed superintendents, I'm Mark Lips, and I'm the area governor for the Lake County Rotary Clubs. Thank you, Michael. This is part two. Human trafficking, California has jumped from number three to number one with human trafficking. Human trafficking in general across the country has increased probably 10 to 15 percent. This is, Lake County is a vulnerable area for human trafficking based on the demographics that they've gotten over the past many years on this horrendous issue. And that is low income, you know, divided homes, all of those things. And the nice thing about- And the nice thing about us doing this with the schools, we've met with every school. We still have Middletown to meet with, which I've scheduled on Thursday of next week. That's the only one. We've gotten our venues and our dinners taken care of for these parents because we want them to show up. And we're also going to do childcare. We're going to give the high schoolers community credit for watching their kids. So, we don't want any obstacle to be in the way of these parents showing up for this presentation. We're going to do giveaways, raffle prizes appropriate for, for this group, for these parents in that age group. The, everybody seems to be excited about it. Each club has donated $2,300 to this effort. And then, through that, we've gotten a matching grant from our district rotary in Northern California. And so, we do still need a few extra bucks just for, I mean, it was a great day yesterday to get all of our dinners and venues out of the way. That was fantastic. So, but we still need printing. We want these flyers. We want these parents to be hit at least three times during the process between now and January. January is human trafficking month. That's why we're doing it in January. And there'll be two weeks. And it's, it's something that has been pushed under the rug. When I first looked into this, CSSEC, I, I, I started hearing stories that no one, that no one talks about in our county. And so, I looked up the CSSEC website, and every county, based on the state's rules, state law, has to have a CSSEC rep. There was nothing listed for Lake County. Now, there might be now, you know, because I've called, you know, I made some noise about that. And, you know, it's just something important that we all get behind. And it's not like our Rotary Clubs and our people behind us are stepping up and going to help. So, but we'd certainly like to see your help as well. All right? Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Hello, everyone. I'm April Liefreman, and I am blessed to know many of you. Many of you know me. What you don't know about me is that I was a sexually abused at, starting at the age of 13. So, I was going to grow up, and I was going to help these other kids. And so, I became a counselor, moved right to Lake County. And since I've been in Lake County, I've been a counselor, a principal, assistant superintendent, excuse me, and superintendent. So, I thought I was retired, and then Kelseyville pulled me out to coach their principals, and I sub for their principals. And in Lake County, I can tell you many stories that keep me up at night. So, the most difficult part of being an administrator in Lake County are the other children and the stories that you can't forget. I had a third grade student once who we removed from a home where she was being raped by her mom's boyfriend. They moved her to Oregon with her aunt. And her aunt's boyfriend raped her, killed her, put her in a box, and put her in the park. I had a special needs student with a very low IQ we worked very hard with. She was reading. She was flourishing. When she got to middle school, she was trafficked by her family and hung herself. So, when, finishing my 40 years in Lake County, I know this is very personal to us. When we had a fellow Rotarian, who was also the director of the Polyclass Foundation, speak to our Rotary Club, she was speaking to me, and she was speaking for our children. So, part three of this is the in-school presentation to children. So, I want to talk about the part where Polyclass is going to come to our high school and train our high schools to talk to our middle school students. Now, why do, why do, after 30 years, the research shows that, well, middle schoolers think that whatever problem they can get into, their parents can solve it. They just do not understand the predators out there. Middle schoolers also think that the worst thing that could happen is their parent find out that they were online and doing things they weren't supposed to do, right? That's where their development is. But what they also do is they listen to older students more than us adults. I have witnessed that through my career. So, when I heard about this program, I couldn't let it go. So, we are piloting that in Kelseyville. And we are really excited to hopefully videotape it and show it and share it throughout the county. And I know that things have changed in my 40 years in being an educator in Lake County. So, these predators spend all their days, 24 hours a day. It's their sickness, and it's also financial gain for them. And they go to Roblox. They go to Fortnite. They go to Snapchat. They find out who these kids are on social media, and that's what we're going to stop.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Okay.
I wasn't going, I didn't know this was going to come up in public comment, but I can't stand by and not speak about this issue. I am currently president of the Sir Optimist International of Clear Lake. We actually brought the issue of human trafficking to Lake County beginning with a conference where we invited teachers, the educational system, social workers, and law enforcement and, and breathe some life into this really serious and terrible issue. When I spoke with people in those professional organizations, they said, "Well, you know, we could count on one hand the number of times that we've, you know, experienced this issue of human trafficking in Lake County." Well, of course, that turned out not to be accurate. We brought a play, Jane Doe in Wonderland, which was produced by a survivor of human trafficking. And things started to change, and I'm just so glad to hear that civic organizations and the educational system is really taking a look at this in a serious way. And then, I'll just finalize by saying, these collaborations, these sort of non-governmental organization, government collaborations are real important to our communities and can really make a difference. And government can't do it all. So, that's where organizations like Rotary and Sir Optimist and educational, people working in the educational system come in. So, thank you for the time.
And that was Olga Martin Steele. She didn't state her name for the record, so I, it's okay. I did. All right, there's one on Zoom you said. All right, iPhone nine, please unmute.
Skylar Leywam, Pillsbury Family Farms. And I place my public comment today as a citizen who refuses to let silence become the cost of survival in a system that is meant to serve all people and not just a few who hold the pen or the purse strings. Benjamin Franklin once warned us that whoever would overthrow liberty of a nation must begin by subduing the freeness of speech. And I speak here today because that very freedom, freedom to speak truth to power, is being subdued not by foreign kings, but by the quiet machinery of county bureaucracy and selective enforcement right here at home in our county. Transparency and accountability should not be treated as threats to the government when they help keep democracy alive. When the government decides to shield itself from scrutiny, it ceases to be the government of the people. And when the truth is punished and the corruption is rewarded, the social contract breaks. The people lose trust, and once it's gone, no policy or promise can bring it back. So, I ask this board, to every public official who has sworn oath to remember that oath, to not act as gatekeepers of power, but as the stewards of truth, to uphold the spirit of freedom, even when that freedom makes you uncomfortable, because discomfort is where democracy breathes. My message is simple. Asking for accountability is not hostility. Asking for transparency is not an act of rebellion. And asking questions is not a crime. It is the very act of keeping our government honest and the people free. So, why can't we be a county that does not allow people who cannot speak, who question the authority, to be silenced? Why can't we be a county that listens even when the truth rattles the ball of comfort and tradition? Because let me remind you, freedom lives only as long as we defend it openly, bravely, and without apology. Mulaum.
Thank you for that. Any other comments? All right. With that, we'll close public input at this time and move on to, we have our closed session items. Yes. And so, we'll go to that right now. And so, we got 9.1, and it's 9:03, Public Employee Appointment Pursuant to Government Code Section 54957B1, Interviews for Interim Chief Public Defender and Appointment of Interim Chief Public Defender. With that, we'll go into closed session, and we'll come out after we're finished on that and get back into our timed items.